Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Policy Committee tonight. Really packed Public Gallery, standing room only, which is really good to see. So we'll proceed through Chair's announcements. Nothing beyond the usual, which is to say we do broadcast this meeting live and it's recorded, available for repeat viewing as well. But if you speak at a public speaking microphone, you will not be caught on camera, but your voice will. Item two, declarations of interest, do I have any? Only from the monitoring officer.
Just to remind councillors that at the last committee, I was appointed as a director for Brighter Futures for Children, so I just wanted to remind councillors of that.
Good, good. Thank you very much. On to item three then, minutes of the previous meeting where you'll discover that the monitoring officer was appointed as a director of Brighter Futures. Any other comments on those? No, are we okay to sign those as in a correct record then? Brilliant, thank you very much. On to item four, petitions and questions. So we do have a petition tonight from Sarah Megan and Sarah is joining us via the magic of telephony. So if I ask Sarah to unmute herself, which is, I think, pressing star six on your handset. It's a bit like those Saturday morning kids TV programmes, you know. There we go. Sarah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Wonderful, in which case over to you to present your petition. You have a maximum of five minutes to do so.
Thank you. I don't think it will take that long. Thanks very much for the opportunity to present this petition regarding the Wokingham Road rubbish situation. My name's Sarah and I'm a local resident. Over recent years, the area opposite Alfred Sutton Primary School, the waste has been pretty out of control with trade waste bins overflowing, spilling out onto the road. I think the bag collection system has been building up. I think there's also rubbish from the flats. And there's been new ballards put in, but the area around pedestrian crossing opposite Crescent Road is still fairly chaotic. The Green Party met with councillors locally, met with waste managers back in the autumn, and there's been some improvement. And I've read a reply from Reading Borough Council saying that there's been various enforcement measures taken, and there has been a level of improvement that I've noticed. However, this weekend, a lot of the big wheelie bins, the lids were open and overflowing, and there was large piles of cardboard boxes still outside, which was a bit hazardous today in the wind. So I do think it's something that we really need to keep on top of. We've got about nearly 250, 247 brief signatures on our petition at the moment, which shows that there is a strength of feeling in the area. So I'm just asking if the council can work alongside local residents to continue pressure on the shops and I believe the private waste removal companies as well, just to keep on top of it with the progress that's been made and to continue keeping this as a priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll ask the committee administrator to mute you now, and I will go to councillor Roland to respond.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I would like to thank Ms Megan and those that signed the petition for their community concern and for the opportunity to provide an overview of the work that our neighbourhood services teams are currently undertaking and have planned to address the issues experienced outside of retail premises on the Wokingham Road and indeed in similar retail centres around the town. Regarding environmental enforcement, over the winter season, all business properties on the Wokingham Road have been visited to ensure appropriate arrangements are in place for the collection and disposal of waste. These inspections were completed under section 34 of the Environmental Protection Act 1990 by our environmental enforcement team. Each business was given time to provide evidence of their waste arrangements to satisfy legislative requirements. As a result of inaction by some of these shops, seven business owners were issued with an FPN or fixed penalty notice requiring a response prior to the 17th of February. One of the businesses paid their FPM but have to date failed to provide the required evidence of appropriate waste arrangements and therefore remain subject to escalating enforcement action. The other six businesses have been referred to the council's legal services team to progress further prosecution action. All waste bins belonging to those businesses that did engage meaningfully in the process of inspection have been labelled to indicate responsibility ownership and aid future dialogue inspection. A regular programme of follow-up inspections on the Wokingham Road is currently taking place twice per week, and any business that fails to adequately contain their waste will be served an improvement notice, and failure to comply with these notices may lead to the issuance of an FPN under section 47 of the Environmental Protection Act 1990. Additionally, the environmental enforcement team regularly conduct inspections of excess waste deposited around public bins. Where evidence attributing the waste to a named individual or business premise can be found, the team may take enforcement action in the form of a fixed penalty notice and/or prosecution. Where there is a pattern of behaviour or recurrence of issues in a specific location, the team may choose to erect signage to act as a deterrent to the behaviour. The signage advises of the offence and the penalties that those that engage in the activity of fly tipping may face. New stickers have recently been designed to be placed on litter bins as a deterrent for leaving rubbish next to those litter bins. The team have printed educational material that is shared with residents to encourage responsible waste disposal behaviours, such as using household waste bins, bags as supplied, or taking excess rubbish to the tip. Recycling guides have been translated into multiple languages, including Romanian, Polish and Nepalese. In a diverse town such as Reading, multiple language communications are essential and something we are looking to expand further. The highway implications, the issues that you raised regarding those and the public safety concerns have been raised with the council's highways maintenance and traffic services manager. The council's highway inspectors are currently conducting a series of inspection visits along the Wokingham Road. These inspections will seek to identify any obstruction of the highway, both footpath and roadway. Any party found to be responsible for placing obstructions on the highway will be the subject of enforcement action. Any proposed changes to existing on-street parking arrangements would require the underlying traffic regulation order to be modified, with statutory consultation and reporting processes followed. This wider intervention work along the Wokingham Road is leading to a review of existing safety measures such as ballards and barriers to ensure their effectiveness alongside the clearance of temporary infrastructure from outside retail premises aimed at allowing more efficient cleansing of the area by street sweepers. Regarding waste collections, Reading Borough Council has a small number of trade waste agreements on the Wokingham Road, and each of these has been reviewed to ensure that the collection frequency is adequate to prevent excess waste from arising, such as you observed this weekend where you've got rubbish jumping out of the bin, I guess so to say. This is the same action that we are asking from arrangements with third-party refuse removal suppliers. Domestic waste collections take place quite weekly on a Tuesday, with residents instructed to place their household waste in provided white refuse sacks in designated areas the evening before or on the morning of collection. All residential properties have been written to by the environmental enforcement team to remind them of that responsibility to present their bagged waste appropriately for collection. Ultimately, given the complexity of the shop and residential mix in the area, this body of work may lead to modification and to align residential collections in terms of collection locations, limited timing for the presentation of rubbish and how often those collections need to be. Finally, I come to future implications. Although your petition is in respect of the Wokingham Road retail shop area, the work we are undertaking there is part of a much wider body of work that our waste services, enforcement and street cleansing teams are working on retail shop areas throughout the town, where there are in there issues of non-compliance in rubbish collections and complex situations with residences above shops. Concurrently, over the winter, the team has stepped up trade waste duty of care inspections under sections 34 of the Environmental Protection Act 1990 at businesses additionally along Whitley Street, Pell Street, Basingstoke Road, London Street and the Oxford Road. Recently, Battle Ward Labour Council has initiated a multi-department senior officer walkabout with councillors from Coley and Abbey Ward along the Oxford Road to ensure that many of the same complex issues that exist along that route are addressed. As a result of that work, we are now in the process of scheduling a review with APSI, which is the Association for Public Service Excellence, to undertake a broader and more comprehensive study about how we can best improve retail areas throughout the town with similar challenges to the Wokingham Road. The study will use an area of the Oxford Road as an exemplar model, and we will ultimately seek to advise a plan that can be repeated and applied in other retail areas throughout the town. The individual shops in these secondary retail areas have a duty to cooperate with the council in following the rules of basic rubbish collection in their areas. In working together with the council, I feel positive that we will all find a better environment and shop owners will see improved retail success. This work that we are undertaking along the Wokingham Road and in these secondary retail centres are all embedded within the council's corporate plan for healthier environments, thriving communities and a more inclusive economy for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Roland. I'll let you take a breath and we'll move on from petitions to public questions. So public question number one is Anne Dally, and she is asking the lead councillor for education and public health. So Anne, if you wanted to come up to the microphone with which I think you are familiar. Could have changed unexpectedly, press the central button. Wonderful, and over to you.
Thank you. As councillors may be aware, the Prevention Concorde for Better Mental Health is underpinned by a prevention-focused holistic approach to improve our residents' mental health, which in turn contributes to a fairer and more equitable society. The Concorde emphasises collaborative, cross-sector working to deliver the best evidence-based practice to support wellbeing and good mental health within the whole population, for those at greater risk and for those currently receiving treatment. Could you tell us what plans have been made for Reading Borough Council to sign up to the updated Prevention Concorde for Better Mental Health with its commitment to promote good mental health for all by strengthening protective influences while reducing risk factors?
Thank you. If I get you to turn it... Brilliant, and I'll go to councillor McEwen to respond.
Thank you, Ms Dally. Pardon me. Reading Borough Council Public Health have been working to progress and refine the approach to arrange a public mental health and prevention-related agendas, including the Prevention Concorde Act. Internal discussions and scoping of the public mental health agenda as a core part of local works and consideration of the refreshed Prevention Concorde opportunity was underway from mid-2022. Alongside this, a mental health needs assessment is being developed to inform local mental health service office, including the local public mental health approach. Significant focus for the prevention agenda and changes in the national mental health and prevention agenda was provided by works and collaborations following from the PAN Berkshire Suicide Prevention Partnership across 2022. In December 2022, the PAN Suicide Prevention Partnership published a consultation draft of the refreshed PAN Berkshire strategy. One element of this set out the potential for local areas to consider signing up to the Prevent Concorde Act as a supportive public mental health offer, and following on from conversations with the Berkshire West Suicide Prevention Lead, a series of initial events focusing on the Prevention Concorde Act and broader public mental health agenda were developed. The session details and themes are set out below. Session one, February 23, exploring the updated Concorde Act. Session two, March 9, case studies and best practices in prevention in supporting the Prevention Concorde Act. Session three, March 29, workshops on engaging with the Concorde process, what is involved and what is the process, challenges and learning. With additional support from the Office of Health Improvement and Disparities Regional Team, the Berkshire West Hub are facilitating these initial conversations and will be providing support for local areas that might wish to explore the opportunities presented either collectively or as a community or practice or standalone initiatives. Reading Borough Council Public Health are actively participating in these discussions and have also had side conversations to explore the details of the refreshed Prevention Concorde Act and evolution with a wider local and regional public mental health agenda. Public Health will continue to consider the options for engagement, challenges and resource implications, and is actively engaged in the Berkshire West process, given its immediate and obvious value in supporting and framing local works.
Thank you, councillor McEwen. Ms Dally, did you have a supplementary question that seeks to clarify part of the answer?
Yes, please. Thank you, really pleased to hear about these first steps. How does the council see the Concorde fostering a climate of support for residents either living with poor mental health or at risk of developing it, which of course is all of us?
Councillor McEwen?
Thank you, and again, I think it's a really important question. As details, we've got some of the workshops and the information about the Concorde Acts and the workshops, but I think it would be really important, you know, to work with stakeholder groups and continue working. So obviously, I will speak to you directly if that's suitable, and we can arrange to catch up and also discuss further engagement activities, because I think it's a really important question, so thank you.
An important thing for us to discuss further, I think, at the Health and Wellbeing Board in that partnership format as we move forward. Thank you for the question, Ms Dally. It moves us to councillor questions, only one today, which is councillor Thompson, and it's for the lead councillor for children. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Chair. Parents in Tilehurst are very concerned at the lack of occupational therapists to provide much-needed services as part of their children's education, health and care plans. We appreciate that there is a severe shortage of OTs in the UK at this time, but would like to know what is being done to ensure provision of occupational therapy for children in Reading.
Thank you, councillor Hoskin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and I'd like to thank councillor Thompson for a question about such an important issue. So councillor Thompson is right to make reference to the national shortage of occupational therapists, which is part of the country's health and social care staffing crisis. Occupational therapists were added to the Home Office Shortage Occupation list in 2019, but the fundamental problem, like so many health and care roles, is that we're not training enough people to fulfil the need. The government's response to the growing health and care workforce crisis has been woeful, but the question rightly asks, what are we doing in Reading to address the issue? Improving recruitment and retention of children's OTs is a priority within the Reading SEND Action Plan. It's a partnership action plan which includes the NHS. Whether the delays are caused by shortage of the NHS or social care will depend on the circumstances of councillor Thompson's constituents. The children with disability occupational therapy service within Brighter Futures for Children Social Care contribute towards EHC plans where the young person is known to social care. All schools, both special and mainstream, receive OT support within the school environment for children within EHC plan or those applying for one via Berkshire Healthcare NHS Foundation Trust and Young People's Integrated Therapy Team. Berkshire Healthcare NHS Foundation Trust has reported OT recruitment challenges both nationally and locally. Brighter Futures are working at a strategic level with colleagues in the health service through the local Berkshire, Oxfordshire, Buckinghamshire Integrated Care Partnership to secure improvements in the delivery of occupational therapy for all children with EHC plans. In the meantime, the Brighter Futures SEND team are actively supporting our health colleagues to identify OTs in private practice who could be commissioned to meet gaps. Shortages of OTs nationally and locally has also reduced availability of the private market. Brighter Futures will continue to work with colleagues in the NHS to resolve short-term and longer-term pressure on OT provision.
Thank you, councillor Hoskin. Councillor Thompson, did you have a supplementary?
No, thank you for the answer, councillor Hoskin.
Thank you very much. Right, takes us to the end of item four. Item five, decision books, there have been none, so on to item six, which is adult social care assets respite provision, and I have Chris Greenway to present. Come on down, Chris. It's all right. It's less fun than a Bruce Forsyth game show, but...
All right, thank you. So this is a report, an update report to the January 2021 Policy Committee Report for a Need for a Respite Facility in Adult Social Care to replace the current service at 188 Whitley Wood. The original report proposed to build a replacement service at Hexham Road as well as general needs housing, sheltered housing and LD service, day service. The council then subsequently took the decision not to proceed with the respite bill in Hexham as originally planned, as the CQC had advised that they were not able to grant registration until the facility had been built, and the co-location with sheltered and general needs housing, they felt, did not meet the regulatory guidance, and also the sort of campus feel, they felt, again, would not meet their guidance. So it could be that we would not get a registration for this service if it was built. So in response to this, alternative proposals have been considered, and this report recommends the development of the respite service at Amethyst Lane. The report also provides an update on the progress at Battle Street, where we have 13 mental health-supported living flats and an older people's day service complex with at least 35 places and sheltered housing and general needs. That's... So the recommendation is that committee endorsed to utilise the Amethyst Lane to deliver respite service for adult social care. Capital has been approved by council in February 2023 and approves the appropriation of the land known as Amethyst Lane from the housing revenue account to the general fund to enable the delivery of the proposed respite service, and notes that delegates authority to the executive director for economic growth and neighbourhood services in consultation with the executive director for adult social care and health, the assistant director for legal and democratic services, the director of finance, the lead councillor for housing and the lead councillor for adult social care to enter into all necessary works and agreements.
Thank you very much. If I just get you to turn your microphone off, and I'll go to councillor Ennis.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris, for the introduction. If you have a look at the report, you know, it does detail, as Chris has said, the circumstances around the situation around the review and moving to Amethyst Lane recommendations. And 1.2 discusses that the CQC were unable to grant registration, as Chris said, with an issue about potential of campus or not within their registration guidance. I think we could have gone down the route of building it and then going back to the CQC, but we are a council that listens and we acted accordingly or reacting accordingly. Don't think it's worth the gamble, to be honest with you, with a valued respite, which is a service that is desperately needed to continue to be needed and also costing a significant amount of resources. So you can see the recommended actions in number two, 2.1 onwards, to recommend moving and building in Amethyst Lane. You know, for people with profound and multiple learning difficulties, this would be a very much welcomed resource along, you know, sheltered housing and general housing in the area, but also linking in whilst the move is for Amethyst Lane. It still will link in with Hexham, the development in Hexham and the development in Battle Street, which we agreed at the planning moving forward. It is a developed and coherent service, you know, with young people with complex needs to give the carers a break from their caring role, but also to deliver a more flexible and person-centred service, which would be including offering support to young people who are transitioning to adult services to develop their life skills. So we're working with the CQC, I think it's always worth doing that, not to ignore the advice, but to work with the CQC to develop best-practice services, because this will be one of the best we can deliver. You know, new, the area will be brand new, there'll be general needs housing, more council housing from this council, but it will be a best-practice, delivered service. You know, the challenges of adult social care nationally, you read in your magazine, I read every word from that magazine that comes through the door, I forgot what it's called now, First, and you can see in there the numbers of councils of all political persuasions. I'm not, you'll be reassured to know, I'm not going to wave any Daily Mails or Daily Expresses, you know the score, have had issues with making sure that adult social care is adequately funded. The option for us of doing nothing is not an option for Reading. We will be creating a vision for the future of adult social care despite the challenges and the budget pressures that are being faced by councils up and down the country of all political persuasions, creating a vision for the future of adult social care, and that's Battle Street, Hexham Road, and if agreed tonight, moving forward, Amethyst Lane. And a significant amount of money has been invested or will be invested in the capital projects, which will lead to really good service improvements for vulnerable adults and the people of Reading. So therefore, very happy to support the recommended actions on page 14 and moving forward. I look forward to the vision that's created in Reading Adult Social Care in supporting people with multiple learning disabilities alongside vulnerable adults. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. More brevity than the usual occupant of that seat as well. Councillor Emberson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Obviously, I support this in the recommendations. I mean, from a housing perspective, we have to be innovative about all land we have in the town, and it makes sense to partner with adult social care. We've been doing that, as councillor Ennis said, at Battle Street, which is our planning, Hexham, which is in the pipeline, and hopefully now Amethyst. You know, I think press release went out today actually on the council homes we're building, and we've now hit 400 homes in the local authority new build programme in terms of those delivered and to be delivered, and this forms part of that work. So, yeah, support it and thanks to the officers for all that's gone on in the background. You know, a lot of us have got sites in our patch, of course, Amethyst is in councillor Ennis's ward and knows all the briefings that go on behind the scenes and, you know, all the viability work that goes on to work out if this is a goer or not. So, yeah, please, it's finally tracked to committee, because I know it's one of the sites that has been sat dormant for some time, and I think it's really important that we look at every bit of land we have in the town, because it is limited, and what makes the most sense. And for that site, it is the adult social care provision which we desperately need, so happy to support the recommended actions, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Emberson. Thank you for reminding us that it is indeed in God's country. Councillor McElroy?
Thank you, Chair. Of course, modern, thanks also for all the work on this stuff as well, obviously. Modern facilities for people with complex learning disabilities, of course, will have our support. One more specific thing, with regard to the battle site in appendix one, I see older people day services is moving there from Rivermead. It wasn't that long ago, I guess, that they moved to Rivermead with a fair bit of resource getting that site up to scratch. Seems a bit of a shame, a bit wasteful. What's the story there? Did the council know that it was going to have to move the older people service again from Rivermead at the time when they were doing those renovations? Thanks.
Yes. I mean, appendix one is from some time ago. It's kind of, that's a report from 2020, I think. So, yes, it's not 21, it's not a recent report, it's kind of capturing the background of this process, but I think, you know, it's entirely right and appropriate that we should want the best possible service, and that will be delivered at Battle Street, a very accessible location in a community that will make the best use, I think, of having that facility right there on the doorstep with those extra care homes around it. Waste of money, it's investment in our residents, and I think we should be really proud of it. Councillor Ennis?
Back to that, I visited the resource at the Rivermead, and it was hit bad by Covid because of the necessary steps that was needed. It's been there a while, and it's been, you know, with the distancing and the issues of safety, and it's been hit. And this service will be even more modern. As you know, they're building a swimming pool in Rivermead and new facilities as well, and that's... and that's going to be very much welcome, nearly finished, but this service is being moved to there, which would be more suitable and more, even more suitable and appropriate for older people as a day centre. It had good use in the Rivermead, but Covid really put pay to a lot, to a lot of resources, actually. It's a whole new rethink now. Covid has made adult social care, along with other services as well, it's made adult social care really reflect on what services it can provide and this is one way of doing it and it will be best practice and it will be some of the best facilities that we've seen in this town for a long, long time, if ever. So it was utilised at the Rivermead, but Covid made it difficult after that and we're moving to an even better service now.
I think you needn't be so modest, councillor Ennis, they will be the best facilities we have had in this town's history, unambiguous. Right, good, nobody else is indicating, we shouldn't allow the moment to go without pointing out that Amethyst Lane has currently constituted with a private sector development. There is the most fantastic caretaker you could possibly wish to find, whose name I've now forgotten, but it's just Robbie Williams, let's just herald his brilliant work before detecting nobody here is opposing this. Are we agreeing it unanimously? Wonderful, thank you very much, thank you, Chris. Moves us on then to item seven, the Q3 Performance and Monitoring Report, and we have Stuart Donnelly here to present. That was like a chess movement, it was really well done.
This report sets out the projected revenue and capital outturn positions for the current financial year as at quarter three, ending in December 2022. In respect to the general fund revenue budget, service overspend totaling £4 million comprised 1.3 million relating to adult care and health services, 1.4 million in economic growth and neighbourhood services, £900,000 relating to services delivered by Brighter Futures for Children, £300,000 in resources and £100,000 in chief executive services. Detailed explanations for these variances are contained within section four of this report. These variances are predominantly offset by the £3.6 million corporate contingency that was set for the year, which has now been fully released. In addition, corporate budgets are forecast to deliver an underspend of £3.7 million. Two and a half million pounds of this is against the capital financing budget, which has arisen through a combination of slippage on the capital programme and proactive decisions made about the financing of our capital programme and the rest is through the release of all remaining contingencies. As a reminder, the approved budget for 2023/24 reduced the capital financing budget by £2.2 million and corporate contingencies by £700,000. Overall, this results in projected net underspend of £3.3 million. Policy Committee has requested to approve the intent to transfer the general fund underspend at the end of the financial year to earmarked reserves to support the capital programme. The final outturn position and reserve transfers will be reported to Policy Committee later in the year. The housing revenue account budget originally assumed a £2.1 million drawdown from the HRA reserve. That is no longer forecast as being required and we are now projecting a £50,000 transfer to the reserve by the end of the year. The general fund capital programme continues to see considerable slippage on a large number of schemes, with a further £12 million of reprofiling into future years identified during this quarter. Forecast net spend is now £72.8 million for the general fund schemes and £30 million for HRA schemes. Policy Committee is requested to give spend approval for the bus service improvement plan, which is fully grant funded. The report also contains a number of write-offs that are requested for approval on recommendation from the director of finance. Council tax collection rates are still behind pre-Covid-19 levels but are slightly ahead when compared to 21/22 and 2020/21. This indicates a partial recovery from the impacts of the Covid-19 pandemic, which is possibly being restricted due to the impacts of the cost of living crisis beginning to take hold. Business rate collection rates are showing as being ahead of pre-Covid levels in this report, but these are reverted to the same trend as council tax as being behind Covid, as being behind Covid nine, pre-Covid-19 levels, but ahead of the previous two financial years as at the end of February. Finally, section 13 of the report sets out performance against corporate plan targets. 19 of the 27 corporate plan measures have a green rating, which equates to 70%. Four measures are amber and a further four are red. Four red measures are customer satisfaction in the customer fulfilment centre, number of self-service transactions via the My Account self-service, percentage of responses to the public on Freedom of Information Act requests made within 20 days and percentage of service users in receipt of adult social care direct payments. 29 of the 52 corporate plan projects have a green rating, which equates to 56%. 20 projects are rated amber and three are rated red. And the three red projects are the implementation of the customer experience programme, create a workforce that is fully representative of the population we serve and review and expansion of the community rehabilitation team to maximise people's independence. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. Now, I should say, before we open up into the debate, there is a single-page confidential appendix here, which Mr Donnelly has already mentioned. I'm assuming that colleagues have had time to get a briefing on it if they wanted. Did anybody wish to discuss that? If so, please indicate right now, we'll enter the private session and discuss it and open back up. Great, then we'll just, we'll deal with the report in the public session. I'll go to councillor Terry.
Thank you very much. So, Mr Donnelly has taken us through all the pertinent points and the recommendations, so I don't really have very much to add, only that I have it on reliable authority, I think it's yours, leader, that we're the only council in Berkshire who's set a balanced budget without the use of reserves this year, which I think should be noted. Much of this information in this report will be familiar to colleagues on this committee and those who attended councils, it's information that's been made available in terms of forecasting for next year's budget, but I'm happy to answer any questions I can and if I can't, I'm sure Mr Donnelly will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor White?
Thank you, Chair. Now, I was chatting to a resident the other day who was raising the level of customer service coming into the civic centre and she was saying that she was struggling to, struggling to get her issue resolved and I had a briefing on this and I was told that a lot of, we're not back to pre-Covid levels for people coming into the civic centre yet in terms of levels of service and people are advised to phone the call centre, which is flagged up as one of the red areas in the report and excessive wait times on the phone is flagged up. I think it's customer, I'm assuming customer fulfilment centre is the same as call centre as it talks about phone call wait times. So, yeah, I was interested in how long people were having to wait in sort of worst case scenario, because clearly if people can't get the level of service they need in the civic centre and they've been told to make a phone call and then having to wait on the phone for a long time, it is not a, it's not a good situation. So, yeah, if I could get an update on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Councillor Thompson?
My question is different. Shall I give it now or later? I just noticed, I don't know if anyone has the answer, it's 4.29 on page 56 noting a forecast overachievement of incoming bereavement services and I just wondered, does this mean a higher number of deaths than forecast, as I've heard there have been generally in the country?
It wouldn't necessarily mean that. It might be that people purchase different services than was expected, but it could well mean that, yes. Anybody else? Councillor Terry?
In terms of customer satisfaction, there's two things. The first is that I think there's an acceptance that some of the data that was used to set the targets originally may not have been entirely correct, just to do with systems issues, but notwithstanding that, so that's just a baseline issue that I think is corrected in the corporate plan that's coming soon. There was also, this is quarter three, particularly in the months, sort of November, December, when we had the very, very cold weather, there were some issues that affected some of the call times and answering, particularly out of hours, very particularly out of hours. And in fact, they'd been monitoring the out of hours provider since September, who simply wasn't delivering and their contract was ended. And because the procurement of that out of hours provider took place in that certain timeframe, we were able to go to the second successful bidder, if you like, and spoke to them and they've been able to pick that service up. And I can report that since they have taken over that service, it's improved considerably. The third factor is that there have been some staff leaving the customer fulfilment centre and it does take a while to train staff up as they come in and recruitment, as it is in a number of areas, has been challenging. So a combination of factors, in particular into this quarter, have affected the performance, which the service managers are very much aware of and are in the process of resolving and sorting out. And I think we will see that it's improving. I think in terms of visiting, there's also that transition from when we closed down and kind of moved quite a lot of things out of the way and getting back up. And I think if you come in the front door, you'll see that some of the old signs have gone that says, don't come in, we're not going to serve you, sorts of things. They're just were hangovers from a time when we were still being careful about who was visiting coming in. So I'm just acknowledging that there have been some challenges and issues, they are being overcome. You'll see the data actually shows that things have been improving and I expect them to continue to improve, but we just should acknowledge that there have been some difficulties. And if you have anybody who's experienced anything, then please let me know, I'd be very interested to hear more about it. I've had some myself, they're in the ones and twos and threes, they're not in the tens, twenties or hundreds. So some small matters that I believe are being resolved now. Councillor Thompson, I think councillor Brokha sort of answered the question, really, it will depend on packages and things and changes, but I do think they have been busy. And actually, I would just say on the record that particularly the crematorium has been coping with a temporary cremator, the new ones are just about to be up and running fully. So given that they've been operating on a temporary cremator and everything else, they've been doing outstanding work, given there has been quite an increase in demand for their services. Thank you.
Okay. No other indications, nobody seems to have indicated that they wish to oppose the report. So are we agreeing it unanimously? Right, wonderful, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Donnelly. Look, the director of finance has a permanent smile on his face on the magic box there, that's how much he enjoyed that. Great, so we move on then to item eight, which is the Brighter Futures for Children Business Plan. And I think I have Darren Carter to introduce and then Lara Patel here in the room. So if I go to the director of finance first?
Yes, so this business plan has been in development for many months with close collaboration between offices in RBC and Brighter Futures. As usual, much of the early focus was on the agreement of the contract sum for next year. This business plan shows a contract sum of £51.4 million, including SLAs. This is an increase of almost £3.7 million in the provisional figure agreed in February 22 and reflects the significant inflation and cost pressures being experienced in the sector. In addition to the contract sum, delivery funding has been approved to support the recruitment and retention of social workers and to improve support to newly qualified staff. On page 123 of your pack, there is a reference to a bid of £300,000 for capital funding. I just want to remind members that this was approved at Budget Council. This plan also sets out key areas of work for 2023/24, including the need to better manage the high needs block and home-to-school transport budgets. I'm working closely with colleagues in Brighter Futures on both of these issues and will report back in due course. I'll now hand over to Lara to take you through the key points from a Brighter Futures perspective.
Thank you. Thanks, Darren. So, hello, I'm Lara Patel, I'm the new director for children's services, so lovely to meet you all. So I'll just take you through some of the headlines, really, of the business plan. So it's our three-year vision, which continues from the previous version up to 2025 with the one-year business plan. It starts by outlining some of our achievements over the last year, particularly introduction of a new Together Families model, which provides more consistency for our children and families that we're working with, moving towards having two outstanding children's homes for disabled children, which we are very proud of. We've strengthened our services for children in care and care-experienced young people and we've increased our reach through youth services, holiday activity fund, expansion of mental health support teams across our schools. The challenges remain an increase in demand and complexity of need for our children and families, particularly around young people's mental health, domestic abuse and the impact of cost of living on our children and families. So just taking you through briefly the priorities, the first two are very much linked. The first one is about providing the right support at the right time and that's about early help and a proportionate response. The second one being that that early help and response prevents escalation into other systems, whether that be special educational needs, youth offending or children's social care. Priority three is about when there is a need for that statutory service, that it's relationship-based and that it's timely and it's very much founded on a strong practice framework and that the child's very much at the centre of the services that we deliver. And finally, the priority four is about quality of education delivered through adequate school places, including children with special educational needs and disabilities, trauma-informed approaches across our schools and financial sustainability of schools as well, and also integration with health in delivering those services. All of those are underpinned by our enablers, three enablers, and those enablers and our priorities need to ensure that we are outcome-focused and that we're able to evidence the impact in everything that we do. And really, underpinning our enablers and, but most importantly, our priorities is a focus on inclusion and reducing inequalities, which is very much aligned with RBC's corporate plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I turned it off. Councillor Hoskin?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I really, I welcome this report. As Mr Carter said, some of the stuff in here, I forget which bits we've agreed in terms of the finances, a lot of the stuff in some that you're asked in the report has gone through budget, the investment in Cressingham. Yeah, exactly, it's all in there. But I mean, this business plan, I think, you know, I spoke at that, I spoke at that meeting in terms of the importance of, so I know it, so I'm just wiping out the plan in front of my screen, but I know it back to front anyway. The importance of the work, you know, I sort of said that in passing at that meeting, but I think this business plan demonstrates the depth and breadth of the work and I think sometimes the scale of that, we can forget a little bit within this council and I think it's always important to remember as well. So I welcome, I welcome this. I think it's also really pleasing to see that particularly over a number of years and so under my predecessors' watch, Brighter Futures has become much more aligned with the council and that closer working together is really important and puts us in a good place for the future, because, and as was alluded to, you know, it's going to be really, really challenging a couple of years ahead of us. We've got, we talked about the OTs, occupational therapists, you know, there's a huge workforce challenge across health and care. The recruitment and retention of social workers in particular is a major challenge for us, reducing agency staff, we've had reports on that, that's included within this document as well. So it's important that this work is focused and has been taken forward. I also think the enablers are really good to see, kind of like common sense, but not always written down. And I know we all, you know, agree around the importance of earlier prevention, less intervention. We see that in our work as councillors, don't we, in the wall? We, you know, we constantly see how, if only there'd been a bit of earlier intervention and earlier support, so much could have been avoided. And so I think that's really important. I think it's also important to be looking, and it is in here, the successes and achievements that have occurred. And I know that, I think there's a certain amount, it's a tough balancing act in terms of the improvement momentum to improve children's services, which I believe is real and is happening and is in this report, and to celebrate that, and I think it is time we sort of celebrate that a bit, you know, a bit more. But it's also really important to be realistic and understand, you know, where we've still got to go and there's still, you know, a lot of work in order to get us to the place where we want to be. So welcome the report. I don't think there's anything else that I particularly want to say. We talked about the challenges, you know, over and again, tough years ahead. I think it is probably worth, you know, reflecting upon the importance of that budgetary support that this council has made at the budget that we, well, most of us voted for at that budget meeting. It's a real and major issue across councils. It's a real and major issue across councils, across, you know, across the country. A lot of councils are really struggling with rising costs. The, there's a, frankly dysfunctional market in terms of place settings and profits being made by providers. And I think what we've got here is outlining the way forward, a positive way forward, but also really at the heart of that, as well as the things here, is that really close working with the council. So together, we meet those challenges and I'm optimistic about that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hoskin. I mean, it's absolutely true that some of those challenges around children's social care in particular have not had the sort of airtime, the discussion in the public discourse that adult social care challenges have, is incumbent on us to make sure that they are recognised and that we do discuss them. Councillor McEwan?
Thank you, Chair. Again, I welcome the report and note that it highlights the increased numbers of children with emerging special education needs who obviously need our support. I note the priorities in the report. I won't read them all out, but, you know, I think they're, you know, it's really positive to see, you know, the early identification of additional educational needs, delivering our send strategies, ensuring all of our children are included in in learning and supported and using trauma-informed and relationship-based approaches to targeting skills. So I think where the report highlights the improved relationships and engagement with schools, particularly around the range of services, and as the report highlights, mental health and support and wellbeing, with the number of schools supported in Reading up to thirty-six, which, you know, is really positive to see. And just, you know, touching on the finances, as others have mentioned, obviously, the the enormous pressures on on funding. And the report highlights the capital funding and also the, well, capital funding for the delivery of send, but also highlights the budget pressures as well on school transport. And so it's a really good report, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor McEwan. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Chair. As you will know, in previous years, I've been more than supportive in comments and praise of Brighter Futures for Children and the great work they have done and continue to do. This year, you will be pleased to learn, is no different. The list of many achievements and improvements keep growing. So my thanks to the team and the officers, not only for producing this plan and report, but for all they do for our children and their families in Reading. One news item I saw this morning that made my day was the great news concerning Pinecroft, a residential home in South Reading for children with additional needs. Following an inspection by Ofsted in January, a rating of outstanding was given. This on top of the outstanding ratings given earlier to the Cressingham home. Both homes being managed by Brighter Futures for Children. This is a testament to the great work, devotion and dedication of the staff and management concerned. As to the plan, I am more than happy with what I have seen, not only in the way BFFC is being managed through its governance, but also in its priorities moving forwards, including its focus on children's mental health and the early help and intervention. We will obviously be supporting the recommended action and urge all others to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Any more? No? We're not detecting anybody who is antagonistic to this then. Can I assume we're agreeing this unanimously? Wonderful. Thank you very much. It takes us to the end of our agenda. Thank you to Lara Patel. Thank you to Darren Carter. Thank you to everybody in the public gallery. Nice to see it so busy. What's that, madam? Best council meeting you've ever been to? You flatter us. You flatter us. But everybody have a lovely evening. Thank you very much.